Both City Council is back from executive session and we will start with AB 16-152, which is a study session on fire impact fee recommendations. And today we have Chief Van Horn to get us off.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. Earlier this year, Council decided to consider implementing a fire impact fee within the city. Again, earlier this year, Randy Young and Community Attributes completed an update of the city's park impact fee, and based on this positive experience, the consultant was chosen to develop the fire impact fee. Staff has been working with the consultants over the past two months, and tonight, the consultants are ready to propose a methodology for creating the fire impact fee. No actions required this evening, but staff and the consultants request Council's comments and direction in order to proceed with an agreed-upon methodology. With us tonight are Randy Young and Michaela Jellicoe, and with these introductory comments, I will turn the presentation over to Randy Young.
Good evening. Thank you, Chief. So this is not our first time together. Thank you. It's nice to be back. Hopefully, much of what we're going to cover as background will be very familiar, and so we'll go very quickly. We've really abbreviated it because we have been through some of this before with you on the park impact fee. We'll spend the bulk of our 15, 20 minutes on the parts that are unique to fire impact fees, so we can bring you up to speed. And as Chief Van Horn said, we're not asking for decisions tonight. As we did with the park impact fee, we're thinking about this kind of like you were hiring us to build your house. And right now, we're at the architect phase, where we're doing drawings and sketches and designs and specifications. And then, if you like what you see and you tell us to build the house, then we'll go away and build the house. And that's what we did with the park impact fee. We first did the design. We had a meeting with you about what was called the methodology. That's the blueprint. And then, after we got your feedback, we went ahead and built that building, built the park impact fee. That's very much what we're going to do here for the fire impact fee. Our agenda for this evening is to talk a little bit, and very briefly, about what the law says about impact fees. This is the part that we've been through before, but it's just a refresher because it's been a while. And also, for the benefit of the public, not all of whom may have seen the discussion about the park impact fees. Then, we're going to mainly focus on topic number two, which is the methodology, which is what would it look like and how do we do this? Then, we'll have a closing slide about our remaining schedule and when we're going to hope to be back to you with results, and then respond to any questions that you might have. So let's start with defining an impact fee. It's a one-time payment. Whoever does pay it doesn't pay it more than once, and it's only paid by certain people, not by everybody. It's only paid by new development. So if you're not building something new or doing a major overhaul of something that exists, this isn't a fee, a charge, a tax that would ever be charged to you. Only if you're in the business of building new buildings or doing major overhaul of existing buildings would you be liable for paying an impact fee. And if you are asked to pay for it, you're paying for something that has to go into a separate bank account and to be used only for capital facilities. That's a buzzword we use in government. It means the big, long-lasting brick-and-mortar and vehicles, things that cost a lot of money and last a long time, as opposed to going into the government's general account that pays for the ongoing costs of salaries and office supplies and things like that. The impact fee is only paying for fire stations and fire trucks. We're going to get a little more specific about that in a minute. And they have to be fire stations and fire trucks that are needed by new development. We can't be charging development for something that was a problem that existed before. And I'm going to talk about that in our next slide. When we review the laws, the rules of the game for impact fees, if you want a detailed recitation of what those laws are, you would go to RCW, stands for the Revised Code of Washington, and the specific section number is 82.02.050 to 100. And if any of you have insomnia, I can recommend a thorough read of that will cure that problem. It's very detailed. What I'm going to give you is the plain English version of what that law tells us. First thing it tells us is we have to be fair. We can charge a fair share, meaning growth, new development, that pays the fee, can be asked to pay for their share, growth share. They cannot be charged for an existing deficiency. We'll talk a little later about how we know about that for fire protection. Second rule, these are phrases from the law. What we're asking new development to pay for has to be reasonably needed by that new development, and it has to be a proportional share that they're paying. And the meaning of that is that the amount of the money that's being charged has to be proportional to the amount of impact that's created. So if you build the type of building that causes lots of hazards for fire responses, you're going to pay a higher fee than if you build a building that doesn't have much in the way of hazards. And one thing we're going to get to at the very end of this conversation is there's a special requirement for fire impact fees, that if you build a house, but you're required to put in a residential sprinkler system, and you've had a couple of experiences with those here in Bothell, then you're exempt from a portion of the fire impact fee that deals with fire protection. Third rule is called the credits rule, and it means in plain English, we can't double charge. If the city has a source of money that's paying for the new fire station, or expansion of a fire station, or a new fire truck, and it pays for 100% of that, we'd have no impact fee. If it pays for part of it, we can charge the impact fee for the part that's not paid for. But we can't charge a whole source of other taxes and fees to pay for that fire station and also charge an impact fee. And part of our work is to make sure we do that math and protect you and the person paying the fee, so that everybody knows that it's fair and it isn't double charged. And then, unique to the state of Washington, we do impact fees all over the country, but here in Washington, we have an unusual rule called not rely solely on impact fees. And what it means is you can do all these other calculations, and you can calculate the total amount that new development should pay, but if the only source of money that you're getting for that new fire truck is impact fees, then this law says, yeah, you got to find something else. We said, okay, how much? They said, something else. Well, we said 50%, 20%, 100%. All they say is it can't be 100%. We've talked about this before. We have other cities that have gone as high as 97% charge to new development, but we've never gone to 100% because that would violate this rule. We're going to talk now, as we switch into the bulk of our presentation this evening, about the methodology memo that we provided to you. And we've broken that memo into three broad topics. The first three topics are going to talk about fire protection facilities. That's the official term of art in the state law. And we're going to talk about what types there are, who owns them, where they're located. Then, the next part of our presentation will deal with the next three topics, which is how do we know how to calculate the fee? What's the basis for it? And then, the last four topics are going to be really topics that will go very quickly because we've talked with you about most of them before, when we talked about the park impact fee, and you've dealt with them for transportation impact fee, but they do apply. We want to spend three or four minutes of your time just zipping through those, and one of them does have a special fire impact fee requirement. So let's go through each of these. Let's talk about the types, ownership, and geography. The type of fire protection facilities that we're recommending to be included include fire stations and apparatus, which is the term of art in the business that when I was a boy growing up and I always wanted to have a fire truck. Okay, apparatus is what we mean when we talk about a fire truck. And then, equipment would be expensive capital equipment that goes on the truck or in the fire station and has a long useful life and is durable, is going to be part of the building. So if you build a fire station and you have professional firefighters who live there for part of their shift, and they have to have a place to eat, and so there's permanent cooking and refrigerator and that kind of equipment, we're allowed to include that. Same thing on the fire truck itself. The truck doesn't come with the hoses, or the hose comes from a different supplier. We're allowed to pay for that fire hose because it's long-lasting in capital. What we said in the memo, if you had a chance to glance through that, is that there are some things that might have met the definition of capital that we're not including. And I would point out primarily emergency communications equipment. Because of your membership in NORCOM and the fact that your initial emergency dispatch for fire comes to your police dispatcher, and we've talked to both of those organizations, and neither of them are planning any capital expansions of their communication system in the near future, we're not recommending including anything because there's no cost to capture in the fire impact fee. Second thing we want to talk about is who owns the capital facilities that we're recommending to be included in the impact fee. And we're specifically recommending only those fire stations and fire trucks that are owned by the city of Bothell. Our memo points out that fire protection agencies all over the Central Puget Sound back each other up all the time. The buzzwords are things like mutual aid or automatic aid, meaning if you've got a fire in Kenmore and Kenmore can't get to put out their, they haven't got, their equipment is busy, and the nearest equipment is Bothell's, Bothell will agree to go into Kenmore and help them put out that fire, and vice versa. When you had the major fire here, it went well beyond the ability of your fire department to handle all of it, and so you could call on neighboring fire agencies. We are not recommending that the fire impact fee have a piece of it that go to these other agencies, and part of that is because they're not going to have a fire impact fee that they can then send to part of us. In our experience, these mutual aid calls, these automatic aid calls tend to about even out, and that's been our experience in developing fire impact fees elsewhere in the Puget Sound. So we're not recommending including those. Another special comment about ownership as it relates to Bothell. Because of your special working relationship with District 10 and the fact that they still own Station 44, we're not recommending the fire impact fee be used to improve Station 44. That's still the responsibility of District 10. If they want to have a fire impact fee, they would then go about creating a study and applying it in their jurisdiction. But development inside the city of Bothell, that is actually in the Station 44 first response area, would still pay to the city of Bothell a fire impact fee that would go into your account. You wouldn't spend it at the nearest station for reasons we describe elsewhere in our memo. It isn't about the nearest stations because fire stations back each other up all the time. And so, the money would properly go into the city account to pay for expansion of fire stations, other fire stations, or the acquisition of equipment that could well wind up going into Station 44's response area, just as Station 44 sometimes comes into Station 45 or 42's response area. The cleanest way to do this without a really complicated interlocal agreement is to keep your development paying you as a city, and then you spend the money in ways that grow the fire protection system that serves those people, and it isn't required that it be spent on the nearest station to that development. That leads us really to the question of geography, and we're recommending that you not create zones based on those first response areas, but that you have a single citywide service area. This is the best practice that's used in fire departments elsewhere in Washington that have adopted fire impact fees, so you're in good company if you take this recommendation. And Bothell has a special experience that we jointly know about from our working together on your park impact fee. You had a park impact fee that had a series of zones, and the problem was some of those zones were so small and they collected so little money that you couldn't spend it within the 10-year limit that the state gives you to spend it, and you had to give it back. So the homeowner didn't get a park, and you had to give the money back because you couldn't find a project that would be big enough, or that was small enough to spend their money, and it was a lose-lose situation. So we're recommending, like your park impact fee, that your fire impact fee be citywide and that it be a single service area for all of the city. So it doesn't matter to us whether the responder zones for the first responder zones for the stations have specific geographies, because they back each other so often that spending your money farther away, apparently, from particular new house doesn't mean that that new house doesn't get benefit. It may be the fire truck from another station that winds up putting out their fire. And that happens so often that we're safe from a defensibility viewpoint if someone should question and challenge that. Now, let's talk about how we calculate this fee. What's the basis for it? The first question is the level of service. And as we say in our memo, there's a number of ways to think about that. If you're in the transportation business, you have a transportation impact fee, you think about how much congestion there is on the roads and how much congestion happens at intersections. When we worked with you on the park impact fee, we agreed that the way to think about our park system is the amount of investment that you have. What's the value of that per person? And then, make sure that new houses and new businesses pay that same amount per person. That was the level of service. And we made sure that the new folks weren't using up what's already there, but they're growing that system. We want to do a similar thing here for fire protection, but we don't have the value of the fire stations and the fire trucks as our best information. There's actually better information for fire protection. And I want to show you an example from the city of Renton, where we did the same approach not too many years ago, and show you exactly what it looks like and give you some numbers to kind of chew on. These are Renton numbers. Yours may be different. When we looked at Renton a few years ago, we looked at all of their emergency calls in one year, and in column two, that number 1,815, that was the number of fire emergencies in the city of Renton that went to residential properties. Okay? Didn't count medical emergencies. That was a different table. Counted fire emergencies. And we did fire on one table and medical on another table, and we're going to do both for you. But just to keep this simple, we're going to look just at the fire calls. At that moment in time, the city of Renton had 53,889 houses. So we did the math. Divide that 1,815 by 53,000, and you get this crazy number, decimal 0336863. What does that mean? That means that 3% of the houses in Renton had a fire emergency in one year. Okay? Which is 3%, 3.3% to be specific. But when you're doing a fire impact fee, you can't say to the new house, well, you're part of the 97% who won't have a fire, so we're not going to charge you an impact fee, or you are part of the 3% who will have a fire. We don't know that. So instead, we use the same information in Renton, and we use it to talk about the average house. So we use that 3%, and instead of saying 3% of the houses had a fire call, what we said is every house had 3% of a fire call. So if a fire call cost $100, every house would pay $3, 3%. That's where we're headed with this information. I'll show you some more on the next page. But we do this differently for each land use, and there's a long list of these in Renton, not just hotels and motels. There's offices and retail and manufacturing and so on. Just to keep this chart simple, the first one on their list was hotels and motels. There were 39 fire calls, and we used the square footage of all the hotels and motels, 675,000 square feet. Once again, we do this math, and that turns out to be 57,000, 57, 10 thousandths of a fire call per square foot. Okay, let's try and put this in plain English. If I had 590 square feet of hotel space, I would produce the 3.3% that a house has. Okay? Ah, so now we can see the equivalent of a house is 590 square feet of hotel. But 590 square foot house is not an average house. It's typically two or three times that. What we've learned from this is that the risk that each type of property poses shows up in the actual fire calls. So you're going to get more fire calls at restaurants than you're going to get at office buildings, because the nature of the restaurant with a kitchen in the back and the things that can happen there, and they're going to get more medical calls because you've got people who maybe eat something they shouldn't have eaten. There's a lot of reasons why different land uses have different rates, and so we're going to calculate that separately for each land use. And it works very well in other cities, and when we come back to you with the land use categories, you'll see what those differences are. And this is how we acknowledge the different risks and the different demands that are placed pursuant to those rules we went through, and understanding how to charge a different impact fee based on the risks that are proposed. Just to share with you what Renton did in order to turn this into an impact fee, those same numbers, the 3% and the .0000572, here they are again, but now we've added column four and column five. We took a look at fire engines. We did a separate calculation for aid cars and a separate one for fire stations. Just to keep this simple, let's just talk about a fire engine. If you had $100,000 fire truck and it lasted for 10 years, do the math, that would be $10,000 a year. If a $10,000 annual expense for the fire truck responded to 1,000 calls, do that math, that'd be 10 bucks a call. What you're seeing here from the city of Renton is we did that kind of math, and we just found out that it costs $28.84 worth of fire engine every time they respond to a fire call. So we're using up that much of the cost of a fire truck. But our residential property isn't using a whole call. They're using 3% of a call, so the .03 times the 28 bucks, and we need that new house to pay Renton 97 cents for a fire truck. They also need to pay for an ambulance and for an aid car and for a fire station and so forth. And they need to pay for more than one year. That fire truck lasts for more than one year, and Renton, it lasts for 10 years. So column five is, hey, new house, you need to pay us for 10 times the 97 cents. You need to pay us $9.71. Same kind of math was used for the hotel motel. We would need a new hotel to pay 1.6 cents per square foot for their share of the fire truck. You will see numbers like this in a much thicker volume when we come back to you following this methodology. And we'll be very consistent with the way we do this for other fire protection agencies in the Central Puget Sound. So that first of three bases for the impact fee is the level of service, and our recommendation is this, what we call the incident rate. That's the .03 or the .000057. That's the incident rate. Second thing we need to know is what is it that we're buying? We talked earlier about buying stations and trucks. We need to be very specific and comply with Washington law. We either need to buy something you already bought but has the capacity to serve new development, or we need to buy something you haven't paid for yet, and pursuant to Washington law, that has to be in your CIP. You already have a CIP, a capital improvement program, and what we will be doing, working with the fire department, is identifying one or more projects for the next CIP that would be eligible for a fire impact fee. To give you a, for instance, and not to recommend that this is the correct solution, but it's an example of something that could happen, instead of building a new fire station, that clearly would be an opportunity, you could expand an existing fire station to create additional living space for additional staff that you're going to hire in order to more fully staff either a new truck or an expanded use of an existing truck that's getting more calls because of new growth. That would wind up in your CIP. There would be a demonstration of the need for it and a funding plan that would include what portion that impact fees can pay for. Which leads us to the other funding. Remember our rules about not rely solely on impact fees? We're recommending that we'll work with the city staff to either find out what other funding is available or might be available. Is it a bond issue? Is it a real estate excise tax? Or if there is no other funding, we'll invoke the not rely solely rule and come back with at least a 3% discount or perhaps a little more. But we will make sure that we comply with that law. And now, into the finish, into the home stretch here, let me quickly zip through the last four topics, the implementation issues. The first one, exemptions, is the only one that has something new for you, and the others are going to go real fast because you've dealt with them already, but they need to be recognized as part of a fire impact fee. What's new is you're allowed to have exemptions for your transportation impact fee and your park impact fee, and you do. But there's a special law for fire impact fees that says if a single-family home is built and it puts in a fire sprinkler, a residential fire sprinkler system that meets your standards, you're required to reduce the portion of their impact fee, the fire impact fee that relates to fire response. Now, like most cities, a fire impact fee covers not only the fire trucks, but the aid cars and the fire station where the aid cars are housed. And the personnel that use that apparatus are fully trained in fire protection, but also in medical aid, and so we don't try and split that out. All the other agencies we work with include the medical emergency component of their capital costs in the fire impact fee. It's totally allowable, but that's not part of the fire sprinklers. The fire sprinkler doesn't take care of somebody with a heart attack, and so we're not going to say that they're exempt from the whole fire impact fee. They're going to be exempt from the portion that goes into fire protection. We'll have that math for you when we analyze Bothell's facts. Typically, in other cities, the fire portion is 10, maybe 15% of the total, so there would be an important reduction for putting in that sprinkler system, but not a total reduction. And our memo, by the way, mentions specifically by name two plats that you've approved in the last few years that did exactly that. They were in places that couldn't comply with your fire standards, and your fire trucks couldn't get to them adequately because of the steep slopes or the turnaround areas, and so they agreed to put in a fire sprinkler. So if a new development like that happens after a fire impact fee, they would get that discount. The other exemptions, you know, we'll be reviewing them with staff and the city attorney's office. You know, they need to be consistent with state law and with your cities, with your other impact fee exemptions. Second thing, or number eight to think about, is there are going to be increases in future fire stations, just like in future parks and future roadways. You already have a solution for both the transportation and parks. We're simply saying you need to do the same thing for fire. There needs to be some kind of an index. You have two different indices that you use for parks than for transportation. There might be a third one for fire. We'll sort that out and make a recommendation to you. Another question will be, how long do you, can you leave this thing alone? How often do you have to update it? As we've talked to you about park impact fees, you don't want to be doing this every year or two. It takes a lot of work, and the costs don't change that dramatically. But certainly, every three or four years, costs change, and so do those incident rates change, technology changes, more houses with sprinkler systems. And so, we think that like the park impact fee, you should plan on an update every three or four years. And in addition, if you do annex the area in the north of town, that should, north of the town of Bothell, that should trigger a new study within a year. And if you make a material change to a fire station, that usually is a cause to then do a new study. Deferring payments. You learned a lot about this this last summer, and you adopted a program in July. We're simply saying you should use exactly the same rules and apply it to the fire impact fees. That was, by the way, a state law, and it applies only to mandatory deferrals for single-family residential property, and you did a good job of doing that. We just need to acknowledge the same rules apply to fire. Last but not least, as we said with the park impact fee, don't try and anticipate annexation. Build the fire impact fee around the existing city limits. If and when the annexation is successful, at that moment in time, do what Kirkland did when they had their successful annexation. Keep charging the old rates until you can do a new study, and you're allowed to do that so that you don't have the new area exempt until you do a new study. They simply pay the existing fees. And then, you do an update, and then that would capture any changes that might be caused. I want to wrap up and then answer any questions that you might have by just lastly pointing out our schedule, as we did with the park impact fee. We're about, you can see the today's date, vertical line under the week of September 12th. Today's the 13th, and we're here with our presentation. We'll answer any questions you have and take any comments that might affect our methodology. And then, what we're going to do for the next couple of months is work hard with the fire professionals and the finance professionals and the community development professionals to come up with our homework and then our study, and then we'll bring that to the staff in task five and in November, early December. Our schedule is to come to you before the end of the year and to have, as we did with parks, a working session presentation with all the numbers and a chance to talk about it. Then, go make sure that the development community is fully advised and has a chance to meet with us. The community development folks have a stakeholder advisory group that we met with on the park impact fee. I would expect to do the same thing here with the fire impact fee. So they have a chance before you act to be informed so that they can come and speak to you about their concerns, and they don't have to come in and go, we've never heard about this. This is a surprise. We need time to review it. And then, we expect to be with you before the end of the year. We expect to recommend, for the fire impact fee, like we did for the park impact fee, that even though you adopt it in December, it isn't effective the next day. There needs to be some period of time, a few weeks, a few months, so that deals that are in the works, developers, builders, contractors, and their customers who've already signed contracts and they just walk in the next day after we adopt this and ask for a building permit, wouldn't be fair to make them pay a fee that none of them anticipated and didn't put into their paperwork. But by allowing a few weeks or a few months, there's a chance for that to kind of work its way through the system. We'll work again with the attorney's office and your planning staff to make a recommendation so that at the end of the year, you'll really have an effective date sometime early next year. I'm happy, Mr. Mayor, to answer any questions that you might have and take any sense of direction or ideas that you might want to share with us to look into. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for your presentation. Is there any questions from Council? Councilmember Amber?
Thank you for your presentation. I always love learning about impact fees from you. You make it very clear, and so whenever you make presentations to us, I hope you use this opportunity to not only educate us, but the people who are watching, because I think it's really, really beneficial. So in your memo, I understand that we, to collect fees, we need to have those capital projects listed in our capital facilities plan. I thought I read in your memo that there was a mechanism that we could start to collect fees and then update our plan later. Can you describe that?
Yes, and thank you for pointing out that I gave a very summarized version in the verbal remarks. The memo is a little more precise, and you've got the right idea. Before you can spend impact fees, you have to have a project in your CIP that you can spend it on. But we can establish what that fee is based on what your current costs are and start earning money, and it can sit in your account, hopefully not for 10 years, but legally for up to 10 years, while you modify your CIP and identify what the project is, whether it's expanding a station with living capacity or whether it's buying a new aid car. It might even be, and we mentioned this in our memo, something that you've already done. You changed the useful life of the apparatus, the fire trucks and the aid cars, because they're getting used more frequently, partly because of growth. Well, that reduced time that it lasts means there's an extra cost that growth can share in. So even though you have an excellent, well-managed equipment replacement account, which is really a good, it's a best practice for cities in this state and not all of them have it. You basically have a savings account where you're putting your money aside to pay for the next fire truck when the old one wears out. That's a great practice. So normally, impact fees can't pay for that replacement truck. But when you've had to accelerate the replacement because of growth, we can have a one-time investment in that. That would not have to be in the capital improvement program because that would be a reimbursement fee of something that's already been spent. But a new project, an additional aid car over and above the aid cars you have, a new fire station, expansion of an existing fire station, those would need to go into a CIP before you could spend fire impact fees on them.
Okay. Thank you. And then we have a really unique relationship in Snohomish County because we have this relationship with Fire District 10 where they own their station. We also are experiencing a lot of growth in the northern boundary to our city and providing service. And you talk about that in your memo as well. So what kind of, have we had any conversations with Fire District 10 yet about whether they want to be a part of this process? Because maybe they would like to be able to make improvements to their own fire station by collecting fire impact fees in their jurisdiction. And so I'm wondering if they want to collaborate on this process or not?
Normally, each agency would do its own study. And so it would be a decision that the District 10 Board and Commissioners would make on their own. It doesn't mean that they shouldn't be aware of or wouldn't be interested in what you're doing or that we should hide it from them. But it also doesn't mean that you're obliged to make the first phone call and say, hey, we're doing this. Do you want to join us? Because the joining you part is the difficult part. Because they are a separate legal entity, they really need to do their own thing. There are unique circumstances. We have done fire impact fees for fire authorities and regional authorities. And so there is a way to do that, but that's not your relationship here. So we can't do a consolidated fire impact fee would be an example. In 2006, for Eastside Fire and Rescue, Samamish, North Bend, Issaquah, District 38, and one other district, we did a study for the entire entity because they were all operating organizationally as a single entity. And so each of the, or local governments agreed to collect the fee and put it into the pot so it could buy whatever station. You're not in that particular relationship with District 10, so we couldn't do that. They would really need to decide on their own whether or not to go forward. I am aware that, to answer your specific question of whether there has been such a conversation, at this point, no. You know, we've had the chief and his team fully involved in answering our questions to get ready for this and really haven't even explored whether or not it would be useful to, for the message to be sent to District 10 that this is going on.
Okay. And then because we have so much growth going on north of our city, is there a potential to ask unincorporated Snohomish County to collect impact fees? Because our, like for example, our, I don't know, if our Station 45 has a service area that extends beyond our city limits, are we able to enter any kind of agreement to collect fees that are potentially in a service area, but that extend beyond a city limit?
But that service area is also in District 10. And so they're the fire service provider. And so under Washington law, when a fire service provider serves unincorporated area, the local government that it turns to to collect the fees is the county government. There are occasionally circumstances, we've done one recently in Thurston County, where Thurston County doesn't collect the fire impact fee for Northeast Thurston Fire and Rescue. It simply requires the developer to produce a letter from the fire district saying they gave the money to the fire district. But it's still the legal entity, that board, that decides to do the fee. So in this case, District 10 would have to make that decision. And then it would have to approach the county to collect that fee in its service area. And it would really need to work out an interlocal relationship with you in which maybe you would collect their fee and that, their Station 45 part. I really think that's a bad way to do this because the way the fire service operates isn't, you know, we don't have these walls between these service areas. But that would be the most you could do. It would be better for them to just do their own fee in the unincorporated area and therefore capture their costs for the areas just north of you. Now, if you annex that area and there's money in that bank account, as has happened in other instances, King County, for example, had some annexations where it turned over park impact fees to the city government where it had collected fees and hadn't spent them yet. That could be how you would work this out. But first you'd need District 10 to have a fee and then they'd need to have money they hadn't spent after the annexation for the money to come to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Nobody else has any questions? I have just a couple. How many cities or counties or fire districts in Western Washington have a fire impact fee?
Let me start by reminding everybody that there's, the largest number of impact fees by type is park impact fees. Everybody thinks it's transportation because transportation problems are what got our Growth Management Act passed in 1990. It's actually closer to 80 or 85 cities that have park impact fees. Not quite that many in the high 70s that have transportation impact fees. And fire impact fees are relatively rare. So in the whole state, I'm thinking we have maybe 25 or 30. And in Western Washington, Central Puget Sound, I don't have that list in front of me, I would guess it's probably two-thirds of that number. So maybe 20.
And are they typically cities? Are they mostly counties? Are they mostly, you know, fire districts?
Yeah, they're typically cities. Interestingly enough, in 1990, when the Growth Management Act passed, it authorized impact fees for parks, for transportation, for schools, and for fire protection, but not in fire districts. Somebody in the legislature didn't think that was the right way to go. And so fire districts were only authorized to have fire impact fees in the last three to five years. So our history is building on municipal fire impact fees rather than fire districts. But as I mentioned before, Eastside Fire and Rescue, Northeast Thurston, now that they have that authority, they're definitely pursuing it. But I can't speak to whether District 10 has an interest in that. We have not yet had any communication with them.
And then, so do you have a ballpark of what it typically costs for, let's say, just a single-family house? I don't know if you know the square footage for multifamily or commercial, but
Yeah, I don't.
Do you have a ballpark of what it would cost for a single-family home typically that you've seen in the 25 different?
Yeah, the fire impact fees tend to be considerably lower. Often in only the hundreds of dollars instead of the thousands of dollars for a single-family house or the very low thousands as opposed to the middle and high thousands. It's a function of the fact that even though fire trucks are really expensive and fire stations are really expensive, they last a long time. And there aren't as many of them as there are parks, which we have lots of parks all over the place and that's expensive. So that's my opinion about why they tend to be lower. We will, as we did with the park impact fee, present to you as part of our briefing sessions, a list of all the ones that are in cities that you consider comparable to yourself, including those that don't have them and those that do. And we can certainly produce a longer list of all the ones that, and all those fees. And we'll have that exact number for you then.
Okay. And then just one last question to follow on, Councilmember Samberg. So we have an asset replacement fund that we use?
Yes.
For, okay, so you're aware of that. So you said in some cases, there are cities that do have an asset replacement fund. Were you referring to, are we one of those cities that has the asset replacement fund? So in those cases, those apparatus, I believe it is, would not be eligible for fire impact fees?
Correct. The replacement of an apparatus that you already own would not be eligible for an impact fee, except in the unusual circumstance I mentioned where you shortened the useful life. So you've already been saving money and you thought you were going to replace it in 16 years and now it's going to be in 14 years. That extra two years means that there's fewer years to build that pot. And that extra missing money can come from impact fees because part of that additional demand is coming from the new development. We'll have to do the math in more precise ways, but conceptually, that's how that would work. But you're right, that once a fire truck or an ambulance gets into the asset replacement account, and if the only thing we're doing with it is replacing it, impact fees can't pay for any of the second and third and fourth and 10th replacements. If you have four aid cars and you need a fifth to respond to additional medical calls, that fifth aid car, a very large portion can be charged to impact fees.
Okay. Thank you. You take a very, probably more boring conversation than most would like and make it interesting. And I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And you're Randy Young, correct?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. Great. Thank you for coming in. Is there any more questions from council? Nope. All right. Look forward to seeing you again.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, scheduled for 20 minutes, is AB 16-153, Study Session, Proposed Planning Code Amendments to Comply with the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, Western Washington, Phase II Municipal Stormwater Permit. And we have Andy Locke to kick us off.
I'm Andy Locke in the Public Works Department, Surface Water Management Program. And tonight, I'm going to be joined also by Wayne Carlson of AHBL Consulting Company. Wayne Carlson is one of the primary authors of the guidebook for integrating LID, Low Impact Development Techniques into Local Codes, A Guidebook for Local Governments. This was sponsored by the Puget Sound Partnership. He's going to give a more detailed presentation in just a couple of minutes. Tonight, we're asking you to review the Planning Commission's recommendations for the LID, Low Impact Development Technique code revisions. We're not asking for any action tonight, but we are asking for direction. We're also joined tonight by two Planning Commission members, David Velay and, excuse me, Gene Zornz. So they're both here in the audience. Say hi. Hi. Before I step down, I wanted to give you just a little bit of a history of the process for us here tonight. We hired AHBL last October 2015. Shortly after that, we held a kickoff meeting with city staff. We identified as many city departments and city staff that could be affected by these potential code revisions. And we brought them all together to begin the process of reviewing all our codes. So that involved Public Works, Surface Water Management Program, Drainage Plan Reviewers, Ops and Maintenance Staff, Capital Improvement Program, Transportation Planners. It also involved Community Development Staff and their planners. We also had the Fire Department as part of this process as well. So all those staff were involved in one shape, form or another from the initial kickoff AHBL performed an opportunity analysis for us. So they looked at all our codes from the comprehensive plan right through all the different titles and codes that we have. And they produced a list of potential amendments. That was then circulated to city staff for review. Afterwards, key city staff then were interviewed by AHBL to make sure that their concerns and their input was clearly heard. This was to ensure common terminology was used in the code revisions, easy to interpret by the various staff later on when they would have to use these codes, and to provide clarity to all. After, we also had a public review and comment. We created an outreach engagement plan early in the process. The city established a website to disseminate information and to announce of upcoming meetings. It was published in the Summer Bridge. I believe that was in the June timeframe of this year, 2016. We did a one press release. And we also engaged with social media, primarily through Facebook, putting postings on there to people that wanted to engage with it that way. Eventually, we ended up in front of the Planning Commission in May of 18th. And we did a study session with them, very similar to what we're going to do tonight here with you folks. June 8th, July 6th, and July 20th, we held public hearings on the proposed code amendments. And then, and it was closed on the July 20th meeting. September 7th, we went back to the Planning Commission with our final findings report and got their approval for that report and the recommendations as well. At this point now, I'm going to turn it over to Wayne Carlson from AHBL. And he's going to walk you through Low Impact Development Techniques and a little bit more about what they are and how they are going to be integrated into our city codes.
For the record, my name is Wayne Carlson with AHBL. And here's a quick overview of the presentation that we have here for you this evening. But begin with just a definition of what is LID? And primarily concentrating on the permits requirement or the permits definition for LID. Secondarily, why are we here? Third, integrating LID principles and BMPs into the city's codes and standards. And there is a distinction between the principles and BMPs, and I'll get into that as well. I'll do a summary of the amendment proposals, which you'll have obviously the full text of those, discuss next steps, and then we'll have it open for questions. So according to the Phase II NPDES permit, and I was actually on the Ecology Committee that kind of helped work through this permit language. But LID is a land use and stormwater management strategy that strives to mimic pre-disturbance hydrologic processes of infiltration, filtration, storage, evaporation. And I'm not going to read the whole thing, but through distributed facilities that include site planning and are distributed throughout an entire project site design. But the two key points I really wanted to emphasize here are that LID is both a stormwater and land use management strategy. And so the permit distinguishes between the two, and so do we in the course of this project. The stormwater portion of that definition really is dealt with under the city's Surface Water Design Manual and as well as associated engineering and construction standards. So that's an area where Ecology, through the permit and also through the Ecology Manual or local equivalents, have identified some specific criteria for the use of LID practices. And there is a lot less flexibility in the use of those where they're feasible than there is with respect to the LID principles, which kind of fall within that rubric of land use planning strategy or land use strategies. So with LID, what we're trying to do is really mimic the pre-development hydrologic conditions where we have less runoff, potential, more potential for evapotranspiration, infiltration, and again, as I said, less runoff. You see in the developed condition, you do still get evaporation off of, say, a rooftop and maybe pavement, but you also get a lot more surface runoff and also the concomitant pollutants that accrue from those pollution generating impervious surfaces. Obviously, there are, maybe not obviously, but there are benefits to the use of LID. And some of those principles include clustering, allowing for the multiple use of various vegetation or landscaped areas that might be required, say, on a project approval, to be used also for stormwater management as well. Some of the other values or that LID brings is that it reduces volume by minimizing high flows, removes pollutants from stormwater, replenishes streams and wetlands, reduces the size of conventional stormwater facilities, and can be visually attractive. And I think you'll note that a lot of the photos that are included in this slideshow of attractive LID features are right here in Bothell. So the reason we are here is that the latest version of the NPDES permit requires that prior to December 31st of 2016, the permities such as the City of Bothell, review, revise, and make effective their local development codes and standards to make LID the commonly used and preferred approach to site development. And so Bothell is a Phase II permittee. And here in Western Washington, there's about 80, 85 or so Phase II permities that are all going through this permit process of complying with this special condition. Sometimes in the vernacular of NPDES, you might hear Phase 1 and Phase 2. So just as an explanation, excuse me, Phase 1 would be Seattle to Phase One would be Seattle, Tacoma, King Pierce, Snohomish, and Clark Counties. And pretty much any other permitty in Western Washington is a Phase Two. And so the idea, at least between the Phase One and Phase Two, is that Phase Two communities, at least in, the intent was that we could potentially learn from some of the Phase One communities like Seattle and Tacoma and in King County. To the degree to which that's actually been able to happen is, you know, kind of depends primarily because, you know, all codes and standards are kind of, they tend to grow organically from solving local problems. But again, the permit requires by the end of December of 2016 that the City of Bothell review, revise, and make effective LID code updates. The principles and the goals behind the principles are to reduce impervious surface coverage, reduce native or adapted vegetation loss, and reduce stormwater runoff, thereby making LID the preferred and commonly used approach to site development. One of the things that we mentioned to the Planning, to the Planning Commission, and, you know, it's certainly been a source of tension, even as, you know, previous versions of the permit, the 2007 permit, were appealed, is that there's this tension between the idea of minimizing impervious surface coverage, minimizing vegetation loss, and trying to accommodate urban densities. And the Pollution Control Hearings Board, in its decision on the appeals to the 2007 permit, indicated, and that's why this got wrapped into the latest permit that we're discussing this evening, is that the NPDES permit goals of minimizing impervious surface coverage and native vegetation loss can be harmonized with the other planning that you've already done under the Growth Management Act. So this permit is not intended to supplant all the other good planning work you've already done heretofore, but is intended to work with it. So the permit, in terms of applicability, applies to small, medium, and large new and redevelopment projects. And those thresholds have gone down to, you know, quite small projects, you know, for new and redevelopment, as low as 2,000 square feet of new plus replaced impervious surface. LID is required unless infeasible. And again, as I noted, there is a requirement to review and amend local codes and standards. And again, that process includes integrating in LID principles, and those are the land use principles that dealt with that, half of that definition related to LID, incorporating required green stormwater infrastructure BMPs, and then also considering optional BMPs that permities may or may not be allowed to opt to allow or require. So the permit requires non-structural practices to be incorporated into the early stages of project design. And to achieve the LID principles through the following methods, some of the strategies being conserving vegetation, reducing and disconnecting impervious surfaces, infiltrating on-site, and distributing small-scale techniques across the site. That's how this kind of stuff tends to be accomplished. Here are the potential code topics that we looked at for opportunities. And the permit actually refers to the process as a gap analysis. But, you know, in terms of some of the other communities we're working with, as well as Bothell, there really aren't a whole lot of gaps, but there are opportunities. When you're talking about reconciling the LID principles with the other planning work that you've done under the Growth Management Act, there really is no bright line. There is nothing in the permit that says impervious surfaces need to be reduced by a certain percentage, you know, across all zones, or native vegetation, a certain percentage needs to be retained. It's, it needs to, you need to meet those permit objectives, and you need to do that, and you should do that in a way that harmonizes with these other planning exercises. So in reality, rather than gaps, we've coined this, and Andy mentioned it at the beginning, as an opportunity analysis, or an opportunity, or opportunities to achieve these permit goals through amendments to the city's codes and enforceable standards. Certainly where there are impediments to the use of LID BMPs or principles, those are gaps, and we sought to remove those. But in many instances, it was trying to kind of move the ball forward or really try to, again, reduce impervious surface and native vegetation loss. So we looked at various codes related to site analysis, vegetation or canopy conservation, clustering, street design, that's where we met with the fire marshal staff, parking design, and then, you know, certainly trying to incorporate bioretention into required landscaping that is required already within project approvals. The site analysis, trying to emphasize kind of early and effective analysis and an understanding of the hydrologic process of a site, including the hydrology soils, et cetera, of a site, and to making sure that, at the earliest stages of site design, that the applicant and the city were assured that the design encompassed LID to the, unless it was infeasible. We're talking about integrating the LID principles, and this is part of the, certainly part of the project. The permit requires unless infeasible, rain gardens, bioretention, permeable pavement. And certainly, it's done kind of on an, kind of an à la carte kind of basis. So you select the BMP appropriate for the impervious surface that's generating the stormwater. But under the permit, you're going to see a lot more in terms of bioretention and permeable paving where it's feasible. Dispersion, downspout dispersion, sheet flow, and perforated stub connections are also on that list of BMPs that you'll see a lot more. The permit also identifies some optional BMPs that permities may opt to allow or require. Most communities are, and permities are kind of staying mum to these and allowing the market to kind of establish, you know, kind of when and if they will kind of come to town. But vegetated roofs, rainwater harvesting, and pin foundations being optional BMPs, and that the, that those BMPs tend to be more expensive, and so they aren't on the required list. But a few communities have, for instance, incentivized vegetated roofs with additional floor area. But those tend to be bigger cities where there's already kind of a push for those. So this is the roadmap. As Andy indicated, we've had a couple of different steps. We assembled a team, and that began with a whole bunch of stakeholders at the city and trying to bounce different ideas off them, preparing draft materials, going to Planning Commission, and then the adoption phase. The guidebook that we used was the official guidance in the permit that included the, includes the following steps, and our office put this work together, but includes assembling the team, understanding those LID topics to address. And that's kind of written vaguely because those LID topics to address kind of reveal themselves in different areas of a municipal code depending on the city. Really, no two municipal codes are the same, and these topics find themselves kind of hidden in different areas throughout various cities. Reviewing those standards, reviewing existing codes and standards, that's that gap or opportunity analysis that I mentioned. Filling the gaps and/or providing additional language, that would be amended code language. And then review and adoption, and then implementation. So those are the steps. So then with, really kind of the balance of the time, I just wanted to quickly go through, just at very high level, and then kind of open up to questions that you might have for our team, but just generally what the amendments entailed. So in Title 11, Administration of Development Regulations, we had some modifications at definitions. And those new definitions related to a new term called hard surface. And you'll see that, you know, as we talk about this a little bit more, but hard surface is a newer term that came out of the newest Ecology Manual. And a hard surface is an umbrella term that includes traditional impervious surfaces such as rooftops, concrete or asphalt, you know, paving, et cetera, as well as permeable paving and vegetated roofs. So it's an umbrella term. And the reason that Ecology came up with that new umbrella term is because with the, with the direction to use LID and primarily for infill sites, there was a concern that some of these smaller infill sites, if they truly used permeable paving to the, really to the maximum extent feasible, that they could fall below, potentially fall below treatment levels, and they didn't want that to happen. They didn't want someone to start paving a site in permeable surfacing and then no longer, you know, trigger a stormwater treatment. So that's where kind of hard surface came. But, 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 so communities are using hard surface now also as a metric within zoning codes related to coverage. In Title 12, Zoning, Title 1206 stipulated conformance with hard surface standards would be a requirement for new development. Chapter 1214 proposed some hard surface standards by zoning district. And previously heretofore, you have not had any kind of impervious surface standard like that, like the hard surface. You've had some in multifamily, but not in the single-family zones. Parking, Transit, and Access and Pedestrian Circulation 1216 proposed allowing vegetated-based stormwater practices to count towards required parking lot landscaping. So there's a requirement in the, in the city's existing standards that if you design and construct a parking lot, that a certain percentage of that parking lot will have those little landscape islands. And what we're saying is that if you're going to be building those landscape islands, that it makes sense that if you, if it's feasible to use those islands for bioretention, that you should be able to do that and treat your stormwater that way. Tree retention and landscaping, allowing vegetation-based stormwater practices to count towards various screening types, as long as the screening objective is still met. So we're not trying to, the intent is not to compromise the screening between incompatible uses, but instead where you can allow for that kind of dual use of a landscape area to allow for it and to provide for it. Within the various subarea regulations, again, mending reference from impervious surface coverage to hard surface and amending the definition of best management practices to be consistent with the city's adopted Surface Water Design Manual. Same thing in the Fitzgerald Subarea Regulations. The North Creek, Northeast 195th Street Subarea Regulations amended the reference from impervious surface coverage to hard surface. The Downtown Subarea Regulations amended, again, the reference from impervious surface to hard surface. So a lot of the, you'll see kind of a consistency as we've introduced this new concept of hard surface to make sure the codes are also consistent. And then also proposed that LID practices can be used within landscape strips, and then also permeable surfacing for sidewalks and bicycle lanes were feasible. The Norway Hill Subarea Regulations, again, similar to the other subarea regulations in terms of the amendment summary. Preliminary Platts, and this was, in some respects, a kind of a cleanup at requiring information related to the infiltration characteristics of on-site soils be necessary for the filing of a complete application. The city tends to require this anyway, but it wasn't actually in the code, so that would just kind of a cleanup there. Within the transportation code, again, allowing vegetation-based stormwater practices to be an allowed practice within the definition of frontage improvement. Utilities, some updates to definitions. And then some updates to definitions in the design and construction standards and specifications. And then also some additional information related to soils data being included within required plan sets. So next steps, October 4th would be a City Council public hearing. And with that, we are, we're here for questions.
Great. I was just curious, is, did the commissioners, would they like to say anything about the process that was undertaken in the Planning Commission?
Hello, my name's Dave Fleet. I'm the Chair of the Bothell Planning Commission. It's good to be with you all here tonight, and thanks, Wayne and Andy. It's good to see you all again. I guess, just to kind of keep it short, we had several meetings on this. One of the things that I guess, one of the things that I encourage the council to look at and let them know is we did have very much of a split with regards to the maximum hard surface coverage area. Whereas a majority thought that it was with, I guess, with guidance from the consulting with regards to other cities, it kind of fell in line with what other cities are doing. And then there was a minority that thought that the max surface allotments were too high and should have been lower, in keeping with the, I guess, the premise of trying to retain water on-site as is required by the NPDS or is encouraged by the LID. And then also, one of the commissioners also wanted to have you all think about possibility, the fact that maybe decks should be a hard surface, should be integrated into a hard surface. That was just a particular commission. That was something else that we looked at. But with regards to that, we really, you know, we kind of looked at guidance from HBL, and we looked at just very specific parts of the code. And, but the big, I guess, the big thing that I wanted to talk to you all about tonight and let you know about was the max surface lot coverage. And I believe that maybe Andy presented something to you today kind of comparing where Bothell lies with, in comparison to other cities. And just to clarify, that particular document, we didn't have when we were making the determination. So we were given other cities, and, but we didn't have one quite that extensive.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Zornz, are you good? Does he want to add?
I'm the commissioner that had concerns, well, actually, there were two of us that had concerns about the decks as being, not falling under the umbrella of being a hard surface. Because when you look at gravel and some of the other things that have some permeability, I didn't view it as significantly less permeability than a lot of decks have when they're attached to homes. And those are not, those are not identified as being a hard surface when frequently they can be and not allow water to infiltrate, especially during our stormy season. And that's the only caveat. And it may be pickyunish when you actually go to implement and put a new building on a site, but for me, it was a sticking point.
One more thing, then we've got to move on.
Can I add one more point that I forgot there? Is when I asked you to look at maybe the comparisons there and rethink about the, or just when I was talking about the max surface area coverage. surface area coverage, towards the last meeting when we already voted, but we wanted to get this thing closed and moved on to you all so we could continue the process, there was a little bit of discussion about that possibly the R40,000, the 50% might have been a little bit high with respect to that, but we didn't make any determination on that. So I just wanted to make that one of the comments.
Okay, is there any questions or direction that council members would like to give Deputy Mayor?
So I have a question about the hard surface versus the impervious. So from what I've read, my understanding is the hard surface is impervious plus roofs, vegetated surfaces, and permeable pavement. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's impervious surface, permeable paving, and yeah, vegetated roofs, correct.
So when I look at this comparison of maximum percentage of lot coverage, and I see Bellevue has them separate, hard surface and impervious, we don't have that distinction. And so I'm wondering if we, I understand that we've got 50% for R40,000, and I guess I'm thinking in my mind, it's on the higher end, and you could say, well, it's because it's hard surface, but we don't differentiate. And so what are the odds that a house on R40,000 has permeable pavement and a vegetated roof? You know what I'm saying? I guess, I feel like we're making it higher because it's called hard surface, but what in actuality will be used is more or less impervious. Am I thinking correctly there, or is my logic off?
Absolutely. Because you don't distinguish it, having that hard surface limit, you know, someone could do the entire 50% in impervious. I mean, the fact is that the permit is going to direct designers to use permeable paving unless it's infeasible. But as to whether a home would put, you know, 50% of a 40,000 square foot lot in, you know, in permeable surfacing, I would agree, I think it's very unlikely. And I can explain, you know, some of these other communities, we're actually working with Bellevue, Skagit, Kenmore, and some Amish, so four of the other ones on this list. And so there are some differences, peculiarities about each of them. Bellevue actually has a third row, so they have the hard surface of 70. The impervious surface today limit, for instance, in that R1 is 50. And so they are proposing to lower it to 40, with a footnote basically that says if a site cannot use permeable surfacing, that they wouldn't kind of lose the development rights that they currently enjoy. So that number would allow for up to 50%. So the impervious surface would be allowed to be increased up to the 50 for a site that does not infiltrate. But they were trying to really kind of push for the use of permeable surfaces where it's feasible. And, but I think one of the other reasons why you see those numbers in Bellevue that looks so high for hard surfaces is because they actually have something, and you wouldn't notice it by just looking at their tables, but they have something called innovative surfacing in their land use code 2020.460G, which basically currently allows you to pave your entire site in permeable surfacing, and that permeable surfacing doesn't count. And so this reducing it down to 70 is actually a somewhat significant reduction in some instances. So they had a kind of a strange code citation from 2009, but, yeah, Kenmore is also doing something maybe similar, and this isn't really showing up in your spreadsheet here, but you see in terms of your neighbor, Kenmore, 30 in the R1, 55 in the R4, and 70 in the R6. And those are the impervious surface limits today. And what they're doing is they are reducing their impervious surface limits to, they're keeping the R1 at 30, they're reducing the R4 to 45, and they're reducing the R6 to 60. And they're calling that base impervious. And then what they're doing is the numbers that you see there in bold that are on there now, they're keeping those numbers and saying that if you want to get back to those numbers, you're going to use, you know, permeable surfacing. So different communities are kind of addressing this in different ways, and it kind of depends if they already have impervious surface standards within zoning districts, and trying to then reduce those where it makes sense and to, and then try to incentivize those. Within your single-family zones, for the most part, you don't have impervious surface standards. You do in your multifamily zones, but you don't in your single. So putting a hard surface standard for your single-family zone would reduce impervious surfaces, at least with respect to the theoretical coverage that you could get today.
So have we talked about integrating any of that language into our code? Did that come up at all?
Of distinguishing between impervious and hard?
Or putting caps on impervious, separate from hard surface?
No, we didn't, only in as much as you, for many of your zones, you didn't have impervious surface at all, kind of heretofore. So you did, like I said, in the multifamily zones, but not in those zones primarily for single-family.
I would be interested, I don't know how everyone else feels, but I would be interested in having something like that. I look at the R40,000 at 50%, and that strikes me as being incredibly high. And the other numbers that bother me are the R9,600 and the R2,800, 80%. I just, I mean, I suppose if it included impervious, but, I mean, permeable pavement. But since we don't distinguish, we're not guaranteed to get permeable pavement, and that's a concern for me. Anyway, other questions I had were, I believe it came up, I couldn't find it in the code language in our packet, but I believe there was a discussion about sidewalk widths at one point, and whether they should be eight feet or five feet. Can you maybe discuss that a little bit and share what that was about?
Right. Yeah, let me, it was on page, I believe, five, but there was a, under, I believe it's footnote seven under the residential area and dimensions. I believe footnote seven had building and impervious surface coverage, and it says, "For the purpose of this section, driveways and front yard setbacks shall be no wider than necessary to accommodate three vehicles across, and walkways in the front yard shall not exceed eight feet in width." At one point before, there was kind of a stronger movement towards putting a limit on hard surfaces, that proposed eight feet was proposed to be reduced to five. And once there was kind of some direction to have a hard surface limit, we thought, well, if there's a hard surface limit, we don't necessarily need to specify that the walkway, you know, in someone's front yard, you know, can't be wider than five. If that's the way they want to allocate their, you know, their hard surface, they could do that. So we kept the language at eight feet as it was. And that was, that was something that came out of the planning commission.
Sorry, I couldn't, I was trying to find it while you were reading it out loud. But I think I understand what you're saying, that, I guess, from my perspective, I'd rather see a max on that. I can't imagine needing an eight-foot wide sidewalk anywhere, other than a major arterial or downtown Main Street type scenario. I'm trying to think, what are my other questions? And I guess in terms of decks, Commissioner Zorn pointed that out, and I do see her concern when you talk about permeable pavement and vegetated roofs, why would a deck be any different? I mean, I have a deck, and it's mainly dry underneath in the rain, so was there any discussion about that and why we shouldn't include that? Or maybe it's permeable, but, you know, maybe it's treated like permeable pavement but not impervious?
Yeah, the, I believe the Surface Water Design Manual, and the reason why we didn't initially include it as a hard surface is if the planks are separated by a quarter inch, you know, in the manual, it's considered not to be a hard surface. And so we didn't necessarily change that. And if I recall correctly, you know, one of the things, you know, that I heard was, well, does that mean we're going to have to measure, you know, the spacing between each plank? And, you know, I don't think necessarily that was the intent, but the, keeping decks out of the hard surface was really more for consistency with the Surface Water Design Manual. And we could certainly, for zoning purposes, and even, I guess, in the Surface Water Design Manual, change that, but that's where that kind of originates from.
I just remember when I put my deck on, I had to have it inspected anyway, and I had to, I believe I had to submit drawings, so it doesn't seem like it would be so difficult to assess what the slat, the spacing was. So I guess I would be in favor of at least considering, it seems like that would be, fall into the category of hard surface but not impervious.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Who'd like to go next? Councilmember Sandberg.
Thank you for your presentation. When is LID considered infeasible? And if it is infeasible, is somebody, is the development entirely excused from LID practices?
Yeah, that's a great question. And actually, we should probably transmit to you the infeasibility criteria, because they vary by BMP. So the Ecology Manual and King County's Equivalent Manual identify infeasibility criteria, for instance, for bio retention or permeable paving, and it could deal, and it deals with things such as the infiltration rate of the underlying soil, the depth to seasonal high groundwater, could be the proximity to, say, a wellhead, the slope of a site, the topography. So there's a whole bunch, and I think bio retention, there's about two or three pages of infeasibility criteria for that. And when I say that the infiltration rate of the underlying soils, even sites that infiltrate fairly poorly though are still considered, so that threshold's quite low, it's .3 inches per hour. But there's a variety of technical criteria associated with each of the LID BMPs. So for dispersion, if you don't have an adequate flow length, flow path, the length of the flow path for treatment, then that would be considered infeasible for dispersion. So it depends on the BMP, but, and we can get that to you, because it's a pretty lengthy list.
Well, I don't need to personally see it, I just need to know that it's incorporated by reference in the code language. And I didn't see that there, but if it's there, then that's satisfactory enough. And it sounds like it's, something is infeasible because of site conditions, not because of economics.
Correct.
Do you, are, are conditions on site that make LID infeasible, is that ever tied to maximum impervious or hard surface coverage? So that if LID is infeasible, for example, you don't, your hard surface coverage limit is lower?
I haven't seen any communities do it that way, no.
Okay, okay. And then you said that you identified through your opportunity analysis, I would think, several options that you presented to the stakeholder group. Were all of those options later incorporated into what we have before us today, or were things discarded from that opportunity analysis? Because they were decided to be too complicated, or not applicable to Bothell? And are those things, were those elements, have you seen them incorporated in other cities?
Yeah, that's a good question. Off the top of my head, the only one I really remember, and that is the detention credit for kind of an existing mature tree. And the new Surface Water Management Manual allows for, and this was something that Seattle and I believe Tacoma really pushed for, was that the use of urban trees be allowed to count for a percentage of your detention, the quantity of detention that you're required to manage. And I believe there was quite a bit of concern that if in fact the city went that route, that these trees then would become stormwater facilities and that would have to be tracked, would have to be tracked in the city's asset management software, inspected, and if a, and that's a pretty, potentially a pretty high percentage of detention credit for a tree that could, you know, kind of vanish over a weekend and nobody know for quite a while. So that's the only thing that I recall, but if there's others, I'll make sure that Andy and I get those to you.
Well, that is a really interesting element, because if you used, if you counted urban trees as stormwater, somehow kind of stormwater capacity, I mean, that would encourage a developer to retain trees and to retain mature trees, if you were able to quantify how much capacity a tree actually had. I don't know if it's based on size, type, or whatever, I mean, if that's actually exists. But I don't know, I think that's kind of an interesting concept, because we're talking, we've been talking about here, the importance for a planning commission, we'll be talking about it tomorrow night as well, as, you know, one of the next steps we need to do is really review our tree retention ordinance, and see that as not just a standalone opportunity to preserve something that's beautiful, but a comprehensive approach to improve stormwater management as well. So I think that's interesting.
Yeah, one of the challenges, I know that the new permit puts a lot of burden on the city, and it's not really reflected here as much in the code updates, but it's certainly part of the city's NPDS program, and that is that there's a lot of maintenance, inspection, and reporting requirements under this latest version of the permit that heretofore haven't been required. And I think that's one of the reasons why, you know, kind of these single trees that might, you know, have to be tracked, that I think that was the basis of some of that concern, with already having to inspect a lot of, you know, say, bio retention facilities, stormwater ponds, so both inspection, inspecting and really kind of keeping up with the maintenance of both conventional and the LID practices. That's what it was explained to me.
I have more thoughts on that, but I'll save that for another conversation. Could you put up the Integrating LID Principles slide that you had?
This one?
No, the title said integrating, so it's before that, there.
This?
Back up one. There we go, yes. So I really liked your presentation, because it made me excited about the kind of the opportunities that we could do for implementing LID throughout our city code. And yet, when I read the amendments before us tonight, they felt more limited than what I'm seeing in this presentation. And so, and please correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm not seeing the greater picture, but in the code requirements that are here before tonight, we, you know, we have a change in definition of impervious to hard surface. And I did see language regarding the last bullet, which is incorporating bio retention in required landscaping. I see that as potential code language change. But am I missing, are we, in this, in the language that is before us tonight, are we incorporating more LID language in the first, what is it, six bullets? are we incorporating more LID language in the first, what is it, six bullets? Or is that just great to look at in the future?
No, let me, in terms of site analysis, there is information related to site analysis in your packet, in terms of submittal requirements. The vegetation, canopy conservation, I believe there is, let me see here, information on that.
And I apologize, we have talked about-
Yeah, there's vegetation, canopy conservation, and allowing that to count towards required landscaping.
So that's, that's incorporating LID elements in required landscaping?
Allowing the use of conserve vegetation to satisfy landscape requirements, yeah. Reducing impervious surface coverage, that was addressed in the table. Clustering is one that was not addressed, and that was because the planning department is doing that under a kind of a separate project. It's, it's our understanding. It's going to be occurring here either later this year or early into next year. Reduced, reduced street width, I have to check my notes, but I believe generally, the, the street roots were, were on the narrow, on the more narrow end of kind of the spectrum of, of others that, and we met with the fire marshal and, and development engineering staff. Parking design, we allowed for alternative surfacing in the parking, as well as bio-retention within the parking. And then also bio-retention within required landscaping in a, in a variety of settings. So clustering is definitely one that, though, was not addressed in here, because it was, um, to be addressed in a subsequent project.
Okay. So like, for site analysis, if I, if I go to the code language, that would be, and I'm sorry to, to want this level specificity, but it is, where would I see that?
Sure. Yeah, the site analysis information was incorporated into some of the requirements within-
Is that in the different sub-areas?
In the different sub-areas, as well as subdivision code, and I believe in the required information for, like grading permits and information related to plan review under the design and construction standards and specifications.
Okay, well, maybe I can, someone from staff can probably point that out to me later. And then, so I, I guess I, you know, at first glance, and I, I agree with Deputy Mayor Duer, that when we look at this comparison of maximum percent lot coverage, we do seem high in comparison to some of our other neighboring jurisdictions, although it's hard to tell necessarily, because we're defined, our percentage, maximum percentage is defined as hard sur- hard surface versus Bellevue has that two-tier approach of hard surface and impervious. And then, like Redmond and Samamish, they define it only as impervious. But even with that, it does seem that our percentages are, on balance, a little bit higher than other jurisdictions. Do you, do you think that's the case, or?
I, I think, especially with respect to the 40,000, yeah, I, I would say so. Because, again, because this is an umbrella term, I mean, there, of hard surface, you could go through a similar process and approach and, and kind of reduce impervious surface within that definition of hard surface. So, for instance, in that 9,600, where there's currently, it shows 60, an approach that, that Bellevue's doing in, in Kenmore is, is that, that that is, is a hard surface limit, and something less than that would be the impervious surface. The way, the way they, the way it was done in, in Bellevue was, and again, they had an impervious surface limit in all their single-family zones as well. But what they did is they looked at GIS coverage for impervious surfaces by zone, and they also looked at building department data for about, looked at that for about the last five or six, seven years. And looked at the, at the, the coverage that was occurring through those types of developments. And, and then tried to come up with a, an impervious surface figure that would kind of bend that curve down. But they, they made a real conscious decision with respect to hard surface, to, to keep the hard surface standard to allow for permeable driveways, or sport courts, or, you know, whatever. So that, that was kind of the approach. But then they also, where, and this kind of got to one of your previous questions, where permeable surfacing is not feasible because of slopes, or high groundwater, or just poor soils, that 40 actually kind of reverted to the, the 50, which it, it currently is today in, in the R1 zone there.
Are you talking about in Bellevue?
In Bellevue, yeah. I was trying to give you that example of just kind of how they did it. So they had a, kind of a footnote dealing with infeasibility.
So if, if their site was infeasible, the impervious, you're telling me the impervious limit went from 40% covered, impervious, 40% coverage to 50% coverage?
It already is 50, so it just remained the same, yeah. This, these numbers that you see here are their, their proposed numbers. They currently have numbers within those cells just for impervious. And right now, in their R1, the impervious is 50. In R1.8, 50, 50, not until you get to R5, or excuse me, I believe, or, or R5 is, does it go up to like 55% impervious. So they already, they already had standards, and they were trying to, to reduce those, and encouraged use of permeable surfacing where it was feasible. But they also kind of made the decision, they didn't want to be punitive to those sites where it wasn't feasible. And so where it wasn't feasible, it was just going to leave it alone.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, so.
It just seems like if some, if, if your site is that impermeable, why would you allow a greater impervious surface coverage than, than what the proposal for everybody else would be?
Right.
I don't, I don't understand the logic of that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right. Um, that's my questions.
Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your presentation. So going to the comparison maximum percentage table that we've been talking about, it's, it's my, it's my understanding that we're proposing what's in red, correct?
Correct.
Okay. How do we currently look at maximum building coverage, hard surface, and impervious combined?
Correct, yeah. If you go to, in your packet, 1214 dot 030, there's a, there's an existing table. And so currently, you deal with building coverage. And so let's, let's just use R7200 as, I guess, the, the example to discuss. You currently allow 35% maximum building coverage, and 5% for maximum accessory building coverage. And currently in the R7200, there is no maximum impervious surface standard. And there, and, and hard surface was not introduced before this set of amendments. So it's not really until you get to the R5400A, the R4000, and R2800, where at least your existing code has a maximum impervious surface standard, which today is 80% in those primarily multifamily zones in the existing code.
So it's 80% in the, is existing is 80% in the multifamily?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. So going back to the 7200, so we currently have a 35% maximum building coverage, but we have no impervious or hard surface requirement?
That's correct.
So if somebody wanted to essentially pave their entire lot, they could?
Yeah, with the exception of, you know, say, say landscape requirements, but yeah, there is no limit to the percentage of paving, correct?
Okay. So in looking at the comparison from the other cities, you have the 70, 40. So its hard surface would be the 70, the impervious would be the 40, and I'm using Bellevue as an example.
Yep.
Does Bellevue have a maximum building coverage?
They do, yeah. And in most of their single-family zones, it's also 35%.
35%.
And that remained unchanged there.
Okay. And in looking at this, you take the 35% for the building coverage, and then you could add up to an additional 35% to get to the 70%, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And that's in all of their single-family zones?
Yep.
That is what's proposed?
Correct.
Because currently, I think I heard you say they had 50%?
Currently, they have 50% impervious, and they have a, a footnote, or not really a footnote, but a section in their development standards that, called innovative techniques that they adopted in 2009, which essentially allows them to pave, kind of stem to stern, their, their entire site, with the exception of what they call greenscape. So they have something in their code that says, in your front yard setback, which generally is about 25 feet for most single-family zones, 50% of that front yard needs to be greenscape, so can't all be circular drive or whatever. So other than that, you know, the, the rest could be paved in permeable surfacing.
Okay, so when I read the 70, 40, what, the 40% would be pertaining to permeable paving?
The, the, the 40 on, on this particular example would be impervious. So it could be structure, driveway, whatever, but it would be impervious surfaces, be a combination of the, the structure and, you know, any kind of paving.
Okay. So this is, I mean, I won't speak for the council members, but this is kind of where I'm getting confused, because I actually do deal with the, the city of Bellevue on permitting things quite frequently. And I do know that there's a 35% building and a 50% maximum lot coverage for impervious.
Yep.
And that 50% currently includes permeable paving?
No, it, it doesn't.
It does not include permeable paving?
No, no. Under, and I'll give you, I can give you a citation for future look-up, but it does not.
Okay. So I definitely would like to, to hear about that. So what you're saying then is that we can go up to, they, they can go up to 50%, but if they want to do permeable paving, they can go higher?
Correct.
And that higher would be the 70%?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so we're 40, we're 35, 40, and 70?
Correct.
Okay. And then I wanted to find out from you on the permeable paving. In some jurisdictions, they're starting to look at it a little differently, as far as over periods of time, it becomes non-permeable. Are you, is that, are we looking at that at all?
Yeah, I believe the, the public work staff has been looking at that. And with respect to feasibility criteria, I know that, and I have to double-check, it's, it's part of the, the engineering design standards, but even when it begins to kind of, to kind of look clogged, it often still has a pretty high levels of infiltration. But, but often the, the big concern is once it, you, you kind of get that moss and, and that grime on it, the, the problem is, as much as anything, is kind of slip and fall hazards. So I, I know, for instance, one, one of the things is to, is to just make sure that, you know, if you, if it's adjacent to a, and it kind of gets down, again, site design, but making sure that if it's a, a tree that has a lot of pine needles, a lot of litter that's going to get in, trying to minimize location next to, say, a, 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 a tree that is going to cause that kind of litter, sometimes on the north side of a, of a building, where you're not going to get much sunlight, that might not be the best spot for, for permeable paving, but, but to make sure it's in the kind of the right, right spot.
So the right application, so?
Yep.
It's not like we're going to look at every single application that comes in for that, or are we?
Yeah, that's in the, the Design Construction Standards. I, I don't have that answer tonight, but I'll, I'll get that answer for you.
Okay. And then, how do we look at aggregate products, like crushed rock and things? Do we look at that as permeable or impervious?
I believe the manual deals with those as impervious.
Okay. And that's how the other jurisdictions also look at it?
Yeah, those, those materials are primarily being addressed within the Surface Water Design Manual, consistent with the way the Ecology and King County are addressing them.
Okay, all right. Thank you. So I'm, I also concur with Councilmember Sandberg and the Deputy Mayor on the significance of the, the percentages that we, we have there. And I have seen the percentages around the 50, so I'm, I'm quite intrigued, and we'll, we'll definitely be reaching out to find out how the other cities are looking at increasing theirs, because these seem to be pretty significant increases over where they are today. So, but thank you very much for your presentation.
Councilmember Regnier?
Well, thank you for your presentation. I'll make mine brief. I too agree with my other council members that I'd like to see the hard surface area decrease, possibly put in another classification for impervious surface, like Bellevue and Skagit County, and move along or in that direction. Thank you very much.
All right, I have some questions. Thank you for coming. So is, is low-impact development allowed in critical areas or their buffers? Are low-impact development BMPs allowed in critical areas or their buffers in Bothell?
I'll, I'll double-check. I, I was under the impression that in the outer 25% of the buffer, that certain practices were, we'll, we'll double-check that.
Okay. So I think it'd be good to have in the critical areas or portion of the zoning code to be specific about that. And I have, I have a lot of concerns about specifically, well, I have concerns, concerns about any low-impact development, treatment facility, or porous permeable pavement being put in a critical area or its buffers. So as was mentioned earlier, there's a Bothell Surface Water Design Manual. Where is that in process compared to this?
Would you want to?
Yeah. But right now, we're in the process of doing the review of the King County's current, concurrent Stormwater Design Manual. So we've selected to go with King County's manual for the city of Bothell. I don't know specifically, we know what our deadlines are, but I don't know who the firm is right now that's doing that review, or if we have them on board at this point.
We could get back with you on that one, to get an update. But that's, that's accurate.
Okay. So you, so we're going to adopt the King County Design Manual?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So do, are we going to allow permeable pavement for pollution generating surfaces like roads? Or is that a Design Manual question?
It's a Design Manual question.
Okay. Are we going to have road typicals? Is that a standard detail thing? Is there something in the zoning code that's going to show what a low impact development road cross section would look like versus a standard road section?
Yeah, we are, and I was talking about that with Andy, that that'll be coming, yes.
As as part of the zoning code update, or is that a standard detail?
That's a standard detail.
Okay, so that's administrative, right, like the stormwater manual? Let's see here, oh, it would be nice if the, where it says, it says not feasible, if we did reference the Surface Water Design Manual for establishing what feasibility is so that we don't get sideways with the state of Washington on feasibility criteria and in the zoning code. Are we, is there a plan, I didn't see anything in there about, so there's bioretention, bioretention, and then there's rain gardens, and nobody else here probably knows what I'm talking about except those guys, but are we going to be specific about where each of those types of BMPs can be compared to each other? Or I'm sorry, are we going to, are we going to determine in the zoning code saying, for example, we don't want bioretention in city ownership in people's backyards, that type of thing? Is that going to be in the zoning code, or is that a design detail?
That'll be a design tip, but yeah, we were talking to the city's engineers on that, yeah.
Okay, so all my questions are in the King County Design Manual? So my, my last question is, I know a lot of communities received a letter from the Pegetown Keepers Alliance, did the city of Bothell get their letter? And so in that, it says, we're watching you closely, essentially, and they want to make sure that people are, jurisdictions are taking this update seriously. And so you mentioned that you've looked at a lot of different cities, or you're working with different cities right now, and you're looking at, you guys are keeping an eye on other cities. How do we stack up? How, where are we in the pack, if you will, amongst cities on taking, you know, the A student route, or the C student route, or where are we at in relation to the other cities of like size and within the Phase 2 permit?
Yeah, I would say you're kind of the, probably the B student, you know? And what I mean by that is, your codes are already quite supportive of the use of LID practices. You already required, you know, vegetation. We've seen communities that that did not have impervious surface standards or, you know, any kind of vegetation retention requirements minimal with respect to landscaping. When you, when you think of the Phase 2s, they, they range anywhere from, you know, the smallest cities like, you know, in in King County, like Milton and Pacific, all the way up to, you know, Bellevue, and Seattle's obviously a Phase 1. But so your codes are already, you know, quite supportive of those practices. Where, where we definitely saw opportunities, which was, I guess, kind of a surprise that you didn't have, say, impervious surface limits in your single family zones, you know, kind of up to now. You had them for your multifamily, you had them for your non-residential. Although the non-residential is 100 today. But so you, so, so you had a lot of the, and you've seen, you know, several of these projects, so some of the institutional inertia also is not really here because you've had some of those projects being constructed here with respect to really the clustering, we've, we've addressed clustering in other places. We're not doing that here, but that's because your planning staff is already kind of going through that, beginning the process of going through that. So that would be really the only kind of thing that's occurring here or that we identified as, you know, or an opportunity. But but you're, you are addressing it, you're just doing it through the course of a different project. You know, we've, we've seen in other communities where, you know, where to try and minimize impervious surface, you know, one of the things that was identified was, say, a cottage ordinance or a greater height and less footprint. And some of those communities really tried to kind of kick that into next year is, is what they called a kind of a parking lot, stating, you know, that, that those are areas that are really warrant a much broader community conversation and really a community planning effort than the, the process associated with kind of scrubbing codes for LID. And because obviously, if you start raising heights and minimizing footprint, you're, you're dealing with the community character, appearance, aesthetic, a whole host of lots of things. We were working with one community that really wanted to, for instance, move from retaining or using as the metric tree preservation by trees at diameter breast height or DBH and going towards a canopy approach, but based on just the kind of the whole revamping and really wanting to get a lot more baseline information of what they already had. They were going to do some nominal improvements to their, their tree code, but, you know, move that into something that they put on for their, their next year. A lot of the communities kind of schedule out their planning, a planning commission work program a year in advance and have kind of come up with some, some work plans associated with that.
Okay, I did have one more question, I'm sorry, I said that was the last one, I think. So for permeable pavement, now that you're, you're switching manuals, you're switching the game on me, but in the feasibility criteria in the ecology manual, so like if you, if you wanted to put a sidewalk on an existing road, permeable pavement essentially isn't feasible because you don't need to put it, you don't need to use permeable pavement in that application because the road bed is not constructed to take water. If you're building a new road, that's a whole different story because you can build the road, the road bed in such manner. So my first question is, are we planning on requiring ourselves to use permeable pavement for sidewalks? When we, just in, in the event that the levy passes, we're going to be building some sidewalks on existing roads, and I'd like to know if we're going to try to be using permeable pavement in those applications? And then I'd also like to know about, for roads, the actual road bed, are we going to be using permeable pavement for new roads? Or is that way outside of the zoning conversation?
I think there's also concern, we'd also have to evaluate on a cost basis because of the concerns, how much permeable pavement is going to cost and maintenance. So we do have some reviewing to do in regards to that, and I think it'd probably be a function of our operations people and capital and myself probably involved in brainstorming that and seeing, you know, the cost per lineal foot, for instance, and that kind of thing. So and, and also, we have, we still have some concerns about, you know, permeable paving and as far as the, you know, the maintenance, the durability, the fact that it hasn't been time tested maybe as much as some other things. So we're going to, you know, we still have some investigation and, you know, analysis to do in that regard.
Yeah, I'm right there with you about concerns about permeable pavement. So that's why I'm asking those questions. I'm hoping that we do exercise the infeasibility criteria that are allowed to us in the, this manual, I'm sure they're in King County's manual in some shape or form. Yeah, so, okay, well, I think everybody had a chance. I don't think we need another round because we blew our schedule. We're going to take a break. Is 10 minutes okay for everybody?
Okay, someone, just so I understand, then in terms of the direction we're asking, it sounds like you, you like us, although we didn't hear a vote of hands, but to explore kind of looking at with respect to hard and impervious and kind of looking at, you know, potentially even adding a second number. I'm seeing some head nods.
Yeah, I heard that, so we don't typically vote in study session?
Yeah, I know, that's what I was just trying to.
Yeah, I think that was pretty clearly articulated by, by the group.
Great, thanks.
All right, we'll go to recess, we'll be back at 10 to 9 o'clock.
All right, we're back from recess and we're going to start into AB 16154, which is a study session for the 2017-18 proposed biennial budget. And we have with us the interim city manager, Bob Jean. Take it from here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry to interrupt you without saying a word. Can we have a motion to extend the meeting?
So move 9:30.
All right, so we have a motion to extend the meeting until 9:30. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Passage unanimously, is that okay? All right. Sorry, go ahead.
Well, I was about to say I was scheduled for 90 minutes, but I don't think we'll need that. What I would like to do is go through the materials we have, and this is really intended to be an early snapshot of the formal budget presentation that we'll present to you on October 11. So when we last left off, we had looked at the first cut on requests, on department budget requests against the revenues. And we had about a $2 million shortfall. Now, that was only about 5% of the total operating budget, but it was still $2 million. So we had to go to work with the help of the finance director, her staff, the department heads, and suggestions from the employees. And also priorities that we got from the community when we were talking about the Bothell Community Conversations. And Robin, I think you can kind of put that wordle up there as a reminder of what we've been working with. These were the things the community said were important, and we really tried to use those issues to guide this discussion. Tonight, what I want to do is just kind of walk through the materials that we've got that be available to council and community. And then really not asking for any action tonight except on two areas. I do want to move forward with the reorganization on the development service team and also on the customer service center. So those are two things I'll talk about here in a little bit. And then get through and open up for any questions and then ask for a motion. In your packet is a memo called the Fall Budget Calendar. And if you think in terms of a public hearing process, where you have an early study session, this is kind of that. And then you have a formal presentation of a staff report. That would be on October 11. And we're going to, this year, we're going to use October 25 to actually have time for council to meet with department directors in more of a work session. And that'll pretty much finish up the staff report. Then we'll go on to council discussion and workshops in November. And by November 8, we should be at a point where we've really outlined where we are with the budget. And you should pretty much have a good understanding of how the operating budget, the general fund budget, the streets budget, the utilities, the capital facilities, how they all come together. And then we'll be looking for additional public comment on November 8. And then we go into the work. A big factor in this year's budget will be whatever the voters decide on the streets and safe streets and sidewalks levy. And that will be on November 8. And then November 15, we'll have to see where we are and hopefully pull the budget document together in some form, either with the levy or without the levy. Then we have to do some further cuts. And that's what we've kind of referred to as the B option or the C option. But the budget as I'm proposing it is a hold the line budget. It does have some recommendations on revenues, which I'll touch on. And it does hold the line on expenditures and hopefully have street maintenance funds from the levy. Targeting budget adoption, I'm hoping we can be there by November 29, get this thing adopted, and then wrap up the December calendar with the business for this year. So that's kind of where I'm going with the discussion. As a part of that, council asked me to put together a review, if you will, or an organization assessment of strengths and weaknesses as I see the organization. And that's been the source of quite a bit of discussion here the last month between myself and staff. But I'm at the point where I'm ready to put it out there and let the community take a look at it. So we've got copies for council tonight. And it's intended to be a baseline for discussions on the budget as we go forward. The report itself is in two parts. One is kind of an overall look at the city's management systems. And then the other is a look at each of the departments and where I see strengths and weaknesses. The, I mentioned the area of development services. I really think we're, we've been working to try to improve that process for a long time. And I think part of the problem is just the organization structure. And I really want to recommend the creation of one multi-department, multidisciplinary team under one development service manager rather than multi-managers and multi-departments. The other area that I wanted to talk about is the customer service center. We have a counter that we set up here at the New City Hall, but it's staffed by people from different departments. And they're not cross-trained. And so depending on what question a citizen comes in with, they may or not have someone there who can answer their question. So it really defeats the purpose of a customer service center. I'd like to create a single manager of that team and do some cross-training for them. The other thought that I share with council in the report, in the executive summary, Bothell is a good city. You are well-served by a staff that works really hard. They're really committed to serving the community and the public. But in all honesty, I think they could be better. And I use the words of a guy named Jim Collins, who's a management professor at the University of Colorado. And he wrote a book called Good to Great. And the takeaway lesson from his book is that the single impediment to organizations becoming great is they're too comfortable being good. Let me repeat that. The impediment to becoming great is being too comfortable being good. Honestly, there's a little bit of that with Bothell. And I think Bothell needs to challenge itself to be a little better. And I think it can do that. It has the resources, it has the people. And some of the things I'm suggesting in the organization report, I think, will help do that. But that should not be taken as a criticism of the individuals or the people, but rather a challenge for this organization to be even better. So I'll set that stage. The rest of the report, Robin, if you could, the roadmap, if you please. We met shortly after you all asked me to step in as the interim. I asked, I think it was James during the interview, who asked me, "Do you have any questions for us?" And I said, "Yes, are you guys ready to go to work?" Because I felt there were some questions I needed answered before I could get to this point in presenting a budget process to you. And with your help, we really talked about the vision for the community longer term. This is still in a draft form, but I'm hoping by the end of the budget process, we end up adopting something similar to this. What are the strategies, those things that take us from where we are to where we want to be? And the values that want to guide us along the way? And specifically, what were the goals that we set for ourselves in building the 2017-2018 budget? I'll talk about how I addressed those goals in the budget development. But it's important to remember that my priority was to get an alignment between the current workloads and the staffing levels. But I wasn't interested in maintaining staff for the sake of staff structure, but rather staff to workload. And what we've been talking about a lot is if we have people in one area where maybe we could use less staff, but maybe there's other areas where we need more, rather than just hiring new staff in the areas where we need more, can we redeploy our staff? And the challenge that I put out to the organization was can we rethink the way we look at delivering services? Can we use volunteers, partnerships, other ways of getting the jobs done? Can we review our work in looking at it from a data-driven standpoint? And what are the workload indicators and the performance standards? We've had them, we've used them. But have they been actively used in evaluating staff to workload and staff to performance standards? And then the third thing was can we redeploy? Before we start hiring people, can we redeploy folks? There are several new positions that I'm proposing in the budget. But my commitment was to maintain the line staff strength in police patrol, in fire combat readiness, in the development service team, in our engineering, our utilities, all of those areas, the line strength is where I've been focused. I have raised questions about management structure and support structures, but we're pretty much on a hold the line pattern. And with that, we were able to get that budget shortcoming, that 5%, that $2 million problem, with everybody's help. We got it back down to a balanced budget. And I'll talk about that a little bit. But Robin, if you could, show the chart. This is the city's budget history going back to 2006 and then through the 17-18 budget and then a forecast at this point of taking that forward. Things, the green line is the city's revenue stream and the red line is the city's expenditures. And you can see in 2006, the expenditures were considerably below the revenues. And the expenditures started growing pretty quickly from '06 to '07 to '08. And then the recession hit. And the revenues, the green line, dropped pretty precipitously. The expenditures didn't drop as much as they went more flatline. And we used our reserves that had been built up in the early years from '06 on. Those reserves were used to buffer the services, to continue to provide services at a higher level than the revenues paid for. And then we were a little, with the recession over in 2012, started building positive, rebuilt our reserves a little bit. And since then, have been tracking pretty even with revenues and expenditure growth rates. As I indicated in July, when we took a look at the first cut, that expense curve was higher than the revenue. We had to work to bring that back down. But for 17-18, with the new positions I'm proposing in the budget to address the council goals, we are able to keep those revenues and expenditures in alignment. And I'll talk about how I do that here in a little bit. We did then run that forward. And this business of revenues and expenditures and getting them in alignment, they try to pull apart. And you can see we've got a slight gap there growing, going forward from '02, '19 and out. But frankly, that's a kind of a normal budget discipline cycle. And that's in about the 4% range, 2% to 4%. It's a manageable number, but it's one you're going to have to pay attention to as you look forward. So this kind of trend analysis, I think, is quite helpful. And I want to thank Tammy and Ted in her office for their help in that. I'm not going to go through the organization assessment report itself. Council has copies, we'll get it distributed and on the line. The public can read it, make their own judgments. We have developed a master work plan that translates those council goals into kind of an action strategy for 18 and 19. Let me address now the budget summary. And you have a two-page document in your packet that is titled the 2017-18 Budget Summary. And I'll quickly hit those highlights and then open it up to council for some questions. The, as you recall, in July, we had that first look. And our expenditures were growing at about a 7% to 10% rate. And our revenues were growing at a pretty healthy 5% rate. But it was still $2 million short. So with suggestions from all the employees and everyone works, we got that down to about a million. And then we had to get, then it got tougher to get that last million out of the deficit. But I'm pleased to report, we do have a balanced proposed budget for 17-18. We'll actually be putting the full budget proposal on the table for you on October 11. But this is that snapshot, this is that early look you asked for. We are looking at taking our 1% property tax limit under the state statutes for both 17 and 18. We are looking now at reinstating the utility tax at the 6% rate. You would cut it back to 5%, actually cut it back to, eliminated it for the stormwater fees. But these are reinstatements, these were cuts you made during the recession to try to lessen the impact on the community. But it is time to go back to that 6% rate. We are allocating 911 dispatch money for the new dispatch position. We're making a capital transfer from the capital facilities account to help buy down some of the hardware and software capital costs in the IT fund. As you recall, when we looked at that initially, it was a total of about 1.3 million that was needed in IT improvements. That was largely because we kept putting off hardware and software improvements during the recession. But now we have software that's not supported by the software companies anymore. And when we buy new software, it won't run on the old hardware. So that bill has come due. And rather than having it hit the operating budget all at once, we decided to use some capital dollars to buy down the capital cost. The operating dollars will still have to deal with the operating costs. One item, and when we get to the budget part, I'm going to have Tammy talk about it, not tonight, but another evening. But we've been allowing people anytime, pretty much, to use their charge cards and pay for things with their Visa or MasterCard. And that's, that's fine. But we've, what we realized when we started looking at it, I mean, we have to pay a merchant fee on that. We have been paying hundreds of thousands of dollars in merchant fees to allow people to charge large amounts on the credit card. I know when I, a couple of years ago, I went to buy a nice car when I retired. And I had a big sales tax bill on that car. But I wanted to put some miles on my airline miles card. And I went to the dealer and I said, "Well, can I, you know, put a bunch of money on the charge card?" And they said up to $5,000. And so I did. But beyond that, I had to pay cash. That's kind of what we're proposing, is that we ought not to just be subsidizing large permit fees, frankly, for airline miles. We need to, the taxpayers shouldn't be subsidizing that. So we want to cap that and charge a fee. And I'll have Tammy explain that when we get the budget on the record. We are also looking to rent out some of City Hall. The decision to build for the future means we have a City Hall office space. It's bigger than our present needs. There are limits, given the financing mechanism, on how much we can rent out and to whom. But we have been talking with Congresswoman Del Bennett's office, for her congressional office, not the political office. This would be the operations, the business side. And that rental, if we work that through, would also be a part of some new revenue. And then the University of Washington Bothell has asked to have a dedicated police officer, kind of like a school resource officer for the college campus. They call it a storefront officer in the college parlance. And they would fully pay for that. So that position is added in, but also money for that. Under council goals, the, they were, well, Robin, go back to the council goal sheet if you can. The first goal was the safe streets and sidewalks. And the proposal is that if the voters say yes, then we would start doing about $4 million a year more in street and sidewalk major maintenance and improvements. Our thinking is to use some financing mechanisms once we actually have voter approval for a nine-year period. We actually think we can move some of that cash flow. I won't go into the accounting mechanism, but if we can move some of that cash forward, we can actually hit the ground running. running and really make a difference in the first few years of the levy, and people will really see a difference. That's also pretty cost-effective, because the longer we wait to get to a street to maintain it, the worse it gets and the more expensive it gets. So we're looking at trying to jumpstart that. Our fallback, frankly, if that levy fails, is we will come back to you and recommend a transportation benefit district, which we thus far have not done, but that'll be just to kind of hold things together while we figure out what else has to go on. The Main Street enhancements, it's taken out of greater improvement or importance given the fire, but the engineering plans on that have been done for some time. We were pursuing some grants which we didn't get, we're still chasing a few grants, and we got a little encouragement from the governor that he might be on our side. And with the Main Street fire, we really want to go forward with those Main Street enhancements. The estimate is about $6 million. If we wait another year for a chance on grants, it'll probably be $7 million, year after that it'll probably be $8 million. So our recommendation is get it done in 2017 and keep our fingers crossed and hope that we can get some grants along the way. Heroin and opioid addiction, frankly, we were hoping that the public safety sales tax in Snohomish County would pass and give us some extra money to work with this issue. Right now, we just don't have the extra money to go into that area. Tammy and others on staff have been talking to folks that actually are qualified and might be willing to help volunteer, to be a resource to the probation office in the court and to our police patrol officers. But basically, 2017 is going to be an education year and figure out what we can do and work with the county, the health departments. The feds of recent are starting to recognize this problem. The technology is not just about technology to support city operations, but what is it we can do to be a technologically smart city and working with our partners, with the school district and other agencies and also the community? We were able to fully restore the $600,000 in training and equipment that had gotten cut in the fire department. Chief and I talked about it, frankly, I felt those cuts were too deep and shouldn't have been made even during the recession, but we were glad to be able to get that money back in to restore those recession cuts. Community events and activities is a position that, or is a goal that council set. We had some money in for tourism development. I recommended that we combine that with some general fund monies and create one position in Parks and Rec to be a tourism and events coordinator. This is not a person to go out and organize community events. This is not an events program manager. This is a coach, if you will, a facilitator, someone that can help support the community in getting their events organized and put together. And this community has the wherewithal and the demonstrated ability to do that. We just need to help them, you know, get some of the hurdles out of the way. Starting the Canyon Park master planning process, we do have a grant from the Port of Seattle that will, along with general fund money, get us started in planning for the downtown of North Bothell, the whole Canyon Park area. Affordable housing, we've got a workshop coming up on October 11, and looking at some options there, we'll talk about it a little bit tomorrow night with the Council and Planning Commission. And it's going to have to be a partner strategy, this is not something the city is going to solve on its own. It's a huge problem for our whole region, but Bothell needs to have a full range of housing options. Otherwise, we get a jobs-housing imbalance, and we can develop all these great jobs, and then people have to live far away, and all we do is jam up our transportation and our travel costs. So affordable housing is a work in progress. The Wayne Golf Course, we'll have a review of that scoping work that's been going on. The land is in trust for us by Forterra, but we're going to have to figure out what the funding source is to buy, buy out the Forterra interest and get that land transferred to the city. We'll be talking about that in a couple, a couple of weeks. Parks, Rec, and Open Spaces, I outlined in the organization assessment report, a four-part strategy for dealing with this need. The North Bothell area is very park-deficient, council's identified that as a need. My recommendation is a four-part strategy on parks. One is to make maximum use of the parks we have. We have a lot of fields that are seasonal, they're grass and they're seasonal, they could be converted over time using impact fees and other dollars into turf fields or into the artificial turf fields. The downplay on that has been the, the questions about the ground tires that are used in the fill and whether they're carcinogenic. But we just learned in talking with the new school superintendent that what the schools are looking at now is they're doing turf fields or artificial turf fields, but they're using ground-up coconut shells instead of the rubber, and of course, coconut shells are not carcinogenic. So that's, I think, something we'd have to do, make maximum use of what we have. The second thing is we're going to have to buy parkland, and we need to find a strategy to do that as quickly as we can. Flat, buildable, usable parklands, particularly in the north end, are being developed for other purposes. If we want them, we're going to have to move quickly. The third thing that we're going to have to do is we are going to have to partner. We're going to have to make good use of the public resources that the school district owns. We have a willing partner in the new superintendent in the North Shore School District, and we should be willing to pay for our fair share of the wear and tear on the facilities and the fields. But I think those, those community facilities need to be partnered up with the school district to leverage what we can do in Parks and Rec. And then finally, the area of open space, and frankly, I just don't see the city having money to go out and buy open space. There's a, when you go back to the, and don't, don't do it, Robin, but if you go back to the word, there's plenty of reference up there to Parks and Open Space, and people want us to buy everything. That's going to have to be a bond issue, the voters are going to have to decide on that at some point, in my estimation. Last item was the citywide training and team building, I mentioned in the organization report. I think it's a pretty good organization. It's got some great people, and the chemistry at the senior management level is really good, but frankly, we haven't developed the skills and strengths of our mid-managers and our professional staff, and we need to do that. We've, we've done a pretty good job of the technical training of our line personnel and their skills, but we haven't developed that mid-management level. And I think the, the move from good to great for Bothell is going to come from that, those citywide efforts, not individual department-by-department efforts. And that was recognized when the council did their training. I've suggested some guidelines of about 1% of payroll for citywide training as a training standard, and I put those dollars in the budget. Quickly going through some of the changes in expenditures, in the manager's office, we have a senior management analyst position that will be retiring in 2018, and I'm suggesting at this point, to help keep the budget in balance, that that position would be eliminated with their retirement in 2018. The clerk's office has spoken to you about the need for the increasing demand for public records and the need for a public records management specialist and transferring the receptionist in the clerk's office to this customer service center under human resources. Finance, our proposal is to promote an existing finance analyst position to the manager of the customer service center, so we'd have a step increase for the additional management responsibility, but it's not an additional hire, it's a redeployment of an existing staffer. The city attorney's office, the domestic violence advocate, unfortunate to say, but the workload there is no longer part-time. Domestic violence is a real issue, and the domestic violence advocate at full-time is something that we need to do. Information technology, we talked about the hardware and software, the analyst and tech positions needed to implement and maintain that is in the budget. Police, a new dispatch position, a cover position. We have two full-time staffed dispatch stations, but when somebody goes on vacation or sick leave or whatever, we have to bring people in on overtime, they're all work, already working long hours, it's a pretty stressful job. What we're proposing is a dispatch position that would be a floater, that could fill in to keep those two stations fully staffed, and then if everybody shows up and is there, then they would help with the records and the other dispatch functions. Police, the fire, we had one vacant position in fire that we're going to not fill, we'll leave that vacant, and we're going to redeploy an existing firefighter that was in the development service area into the fire service area, so we'll keep fire service line strength fully up to strength and still cut some budget savings there. Parks and Rec, I mentioned the tourism and events coordinator position. We're also, because of additional parks that we've acquired in 2016, we're going to be needing to add one maintenance worker in 2017, and then we've got additional parks and possibly Wayne Golf Course coming online in 2018, and we've got two additional maintenance workers there to keep up with the growing parks workload. One position that we hadn't talked about, and frankly, it's one I'm hoping we can have some discussion on over the course of the budget, and that is an economic development coordinator or manager position. I think Bothell's missing a real opportunity here. We do a pretty good job working out of the manager's office, working with the downtown development community, but we are not working to help the existing businesses in the industrial business park, Canyon Park areas, the other areas of the city to grow their business and to keep them here in Bothell. And I really think a more active economic development approach is one that warrants some treatment, and I've put in a proposed position there. I also mentioned earlier the reorganization of development services along with the customer service center. Lastly, and then we'll see where you want to go with this discussion tonight, Mr. Mayor, but lastly, things that are not addressed in the proposed or snapshot of the budget. The fallback options, if the levy fails, we've not really developed that. I think we're still going to be short five to 10 positions, half million to a million dollars, if we have to reallocate some money just to keep the streets at a minimum level. So I haven't developed my thinking on that, as soon as I do, I'll get that to you. We haven't talked any further in the proposed budget about our transportation benefit district, but I think we'll have to look at that if the levy fails. We do have an update coming forward on development services, fees and charges. I'm really not looking for a net increase there, but we're trying to move from a time and materials type billing to a flat fee and average billing, but I think we're in the process of recovering our costs in that area. And unless we're off in some big way somewhere, I don't see any big increases in that regard. There are other revenue options that the city can look at, but we haven't studied those and don't have a recommendation there. Not included in the proposal, and it's not something I oppose, but we just got it from the Snohomish County Health Department, they're recommending a $2 per capita contribution by the city for the Snohomish County portion of the city, so that'd be about $40,000 that is not in the budget. Also not in the proposed budget is additional funding for human services. That's a number that has not been adjusted for some years and probably deserves to be reviewed. Not in the budget is any funding for affordable housing beyond trying to figure out what we can do in the way of incentives and regulatory approaches for affordable housing. We don't have any money going in directly beyond our share of the community development block grant funds. Also not in the budget in front of you right now are the utilities and capital facilities budgets, but we're in the process of getting those finalized, and we'll have that to you here within a few weeks. Also, additional to the notes in your packet, but a couple of other things that I remembered are not in the budget, we recently received a request from UW Bothell and Cascadia College to start looking at the corridor connections between downtown and the campus area, and they were asking for somewhere between $300,000 and $500,000. We really haven't met with them to figure out exactly what they're thinking. I did hear the mayor had some discussions, he's been twisting the governor's arm with some success, and apparently the governor may be favorable towards some discretionary funds to help with that connection, so we want to pursue that. And then the other thing we don't have is direct funding beyond whatever we have in the way of lodging tax advisory committee funds, beyond the LTAC funds. We are not putting funds into developing and running city-run programs and events. We're not proposing to do that. We are proposing a position that would help provide community-run programs and events. So I think, Mr. Mayor, you've got the tables, the charts, the historical, the one-page budget, if you want the budget in one page, there it is, and that pretty much is a snapshot of where we're going, my formal budget message, and the formal budget presentation that will be submitted on October 11. So with that, I'll stop and see if, if there's some things you need or questions you have between now and October 11. Otherwise, I'll shut up.
So we have about five more minutes, because we only extended until 9:30. Do we have questions from council for the city manager or comments? Councilmember, oh, Councilmember Sandberg?
I'm just going to make a comment, and it'll be very open-ended. If Robin can put that revenues and expenditure historical graph, I think there's a lot of information about our city in that graph, both in the past and the present, and then going into the future that we need to discuss more. I mean, when you look back in 2006, how our revenues far outpaced our expenditures, and we do not exist in that format today, and in fact, we've seen a market increase over time, and it'd be, you know, why, why are we experiencing that? Is it solely due to population growth? Or what are the factors that contribute to the, the shape of that graph? And I'm not really, and we don't have time to really delve into that anymore, but I think that that's, there's, there's a lot of information wrapped up in there that we need to consider and think about and potentially discuss in the future.
And, Mr. Mayor, for the public, council has copies of the tabular data that the graph is drawn from, so we'll have that on the webpage as well, and somebody that wants to go in and do their line item and out, they can have, have their hearts delight on it.
Great, thank you. Is there any other comments or questions?
I have a quick comment, but I just want to say I want to thank you, Bob Jean, for, for what you've done, just having the, just the preamble to this, having the goals established that the council and the executive staff sat down and worked out together, and having the vision statement of the city refreshed, I would say, from what it was previously, I think is all very important things, and then to link that to a calendar and to the budget, I think is something that's just long overdue, and I really appreciate you doing that, because it makes us, makes us much more involved with how the city operates. I think it helps a lot with make sure the community is well-heard, and it's expressed in how we expend the taxes that we collect from them. And I just, I just really appreciate what you've done over the short amount of time that you've been here, so.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, but it certainly wasn't my doing. I asked some questions, and some of the questions I asked made people a little uneasy and a little uncomfortable, but I want to restate, this is a good organization, and it was a team effort to get this budget in balance and to be able to address the goals that you set, so. And I, I don't want to forget to ask for a motion on the reorganizations, but it was a real team effort.
No, I understand. You just, you knew the question, which questions to ask, though, and I think that's, I mean, just the value of having somebody with 40 years' experience in doing this has been very helpful in an interim, so I appreciate that. So, so you did want the, the motion, we do have the motion, and Deputy Mayor is the one to provide the motion?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize interim city manager to implement proposed development services and customer service center reorganizations effective immediately.
So it's moved by a council member, Deputy Mayor, where do you got that? Deputy Mayor Dewar, seconded by a council member Agnew, to authorize interim city manager to implement proposed development services and customer service center reorganizations effective immediately. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, go ahead, place your. Seeing none, go ahead, place your vote. Oh, we're not ready to vote. Well, I'm not blinking over here. We can do it by hand. Okay, there we go. Place your vote. Passes unanimously with Councilmember Spivey and Councilmember Freed absent and excused. Is there anything else on our agenda? Nope. Is there a motion to adjourn is in order?
So moved.
Moved by Councilor, or Deputy Mayor Dewar, seconded by Councilmember Agnew to adjourn. Oh, place your vote. It passes unanimously, we adjourn.